Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting of February the ninth. Madam Clerk, would you read your roll call, please?
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Paesnook.
Present.
Ms. Rickclue.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker. Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Mr. West.
Here.
And Mr. Cantle.
Here.
Seven council members present and one absent.
Very good, raise your eyes with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening, we'll give some indications. Thank you, sir.
Privilege. Dear Lord, we're grateful for such a beautiful winter day as you've given us and for the privilege to be here together to further the work of our community and the progress that we wonderfully make under your leadership. I'm always thankful, Lord, for the close-knit character of this community and how it is that that spirit of working together to achieve a greater good continues to lead us as your people. I pray tonight you'll continue to bless our mayor and councilpersons, department heads, and all those, Lord, who lead and serve this city, including the boots that are on the ground every day, to help us enjoy our way of life. We continue to pray for those that you've ministered to for years ongoing, those with health issues. Tonight, I want to be faithful to remember Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Rickclue, Mr. Shyland, Chief Myers, Gabriel Polston, Mrs. Bush Jost, and any other within our city families that I may not have mentioned, Lord, you bless as only you can do. We dedicate our lives to your service, and, Lord, you lead this community and the work that's done tonight here and those that participate, and we'll all be grateful for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. Happy end. First item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing, and the public hearing is to consider the proposed rezoning of a tract of land known as 208 Northeast State, 811 Bluff Street and 813 North Bluff Street. The format for the meeting will be as follows. I'll make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the matter, and then I'll make three calls for anyone speaking in support of the matter, and then we'll declare the meeting closed, and council will consider the testimony later in the meeting when they consider the question. So at this time, I will make the first call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning? If you're coming forward at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll take the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning?
Say, "Opposition"?
Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Very good. Still don't see anybody coming forward. So therefore, we'll make three calls now, I'll issue those for anyone speaking in favor of the proposed rezoning. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? Please come forward. Good evening, thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Segerson, I live at 811 Bluff. And last time I was up here, I see the longer your faces from last time, now on the other side of the fence, against the Riley's. And I pleaded for you all to help me not get that in there. And at this stage of the game, when it comes to the meeting, you all have your minds all made up, with nothing anybody can say to change it. And I raised my family, two great kids, nice dog, and I had a lot, a lot of good memories in that house. Frances Hayes, she lived there, she was their family, had a rancho staying upstairs in the apartment upstairs. That house has a lot of memories, a lot of good memories. I moved from Millersburg to Fulton, and that was a very big transition for myself and my kids. And, uh, living on Bluff Street was really a challenge, but I will say that I really enjoyed living here in town, even though it didn't work out in my favor at the time, must work out in my favor now, that, you know, it's time to move on, and that I really did enjoy living in here and all the city. And I thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. At this time, I'll make the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll declare this public hearing closed, and we'll now move back to our regular agenda. Thank you. Prior to each council meeting, we set a time aside for visitors or anyone wishing to share a concern with the city council to do that, and we just ask that you give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to five minutes, of which the clerk will time that. So at this time, is there anyone present who wished to address the council about an issue within the city? Please come forward.
I get tired of waiting on your volume.
Sure.
Okay, you have later on tonight this vegetation burn allowance.
Yes.
Did you happen to hear Saturday's news about the big fire they had in Boone County? One acre burn?
Seven and a half acre.
Yeah, seven and a half. So that's why I am so opposed. Now, we have a community of what, 12,128 according to the city limit signs? Say 3,000 of us get out there and burn on a certain day or a certain weekend, can you see the Los Angeles smog covering the city? Can you see all the young people going to ER? In my opinion, this whole thing is scrapped. One other concern, I think last meeting you said something about Department of Corrections was putting up these lovely brick signs that, you know, Carver Park or whatever, and they were doing it for free. You're not doing it for free. I'm paying taxes on that person to have a roof over his head, three meals a day, medical, a full college education if they want it. Why not propose that out to the general public? They're gonna give you your money back because you're gonna pay them, yeah, you will pay them more than what Department of Corrections, but they're gonna turn right around and spend that money in this town. So I think we ought to go back and give that to Fulton citizens instead of giving it to Department of Corrections. You're paying for the gas, you're paying for the van, you're paying for that security guard to stand there and watch them. And my whole complaint is, it's my tax dollars doing it, and I don't like that. So that's on my opposition, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Does anyone else who'd like to share a concern with the city? Please come forward.
Hi.
It was only because I was here with Benome last meeting that I even learned about the burn ban, and I was hoping more information could go out into the city regarding what it is by stopping with the chief of the fire chief?
Acting Fire Chief.
Acting Fire Chief. I'll give you a promotion. And I learned more in three minutes talking with him before the meeting than I had ever heard. I just would like to have more information out there so I would even know if I'm opposed or for it, and, you know, personally, I think those signs are great, and keep putting those signs around town, it really makes it look professional. All right, thank you.
I didn't say you look very aggressive.
Well, I'll give you your 75 times.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Does anyone else who'd like to share a concern with the city council? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with the agenda. We've now considered unfinished business, and very timely discussion is on the vegetation burn allowance. The, again, we've had some feedback, we've asked the citizens to call in, we've heard so far from six, and again, all of those were opposed to the burning. Is there any further discussion among the council?
I've had two phone calls last week, one for and one against. The one for would rather see us, if we're gonna do a burn, do it in September, one weekend in September, one in October. The other residential was against it.
Anybody else have any input?
Personally, experience, I came from a small community that's the same size as Fulton. They didn't have a burn ordinance, they just burnt them, they felt like they didn't. I watched my mother burn down two storage sheds. I also watched her burn down an old toilet that used to have out in the community. Made us all start using the farm. That's when I was a kid growing up.
Got toilets around now.
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
Yeah. Also, you may or may not be aware that when you start burning things, people just throw everything in there that they control. And the process of doing that, if they happen to throw poison ivies into that and they happen to breathe it, they're gonna have a deadly, deadly... I see the firefighter sitting there shaking her head, and I'd like to have assistant chief to come up and talk about this. Because I've made a few phone calls since commuting around the area, I didn't find not one chief in any of those communities that were toward this, so I'm against it 100 percent.
The fire department encourages the citizens to utilize the compost dumpsters at each station. I have wrote up a, a piece of paper here in reference to the burning, if you do, recommendations on what we should follow if we do vote it in to do it, and I have copies here if you guys would like that. I have received a couple of calls at the station, citizens that were against the burning.
Okay. I'd like to have a copy of that myself, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Moore?
Well, like I said, I had two, but since we, last council meeting, I was unable to make it, so I want to thank the mayor and the minister and the fire chief and a couple of department heads that showed up at the meeting. And as Richard says, one of mine said, if you didn't do the burn, felt that doing the two pickups in October would be just as good if you could do it that way. So, you know, with our fall cleanup, maybe we can get by without burning, and maybe they'll rake their leaves, but as we said in the meeting, not everybody's gonna rake their leaves or burn them anyhow, so if we offered the fall cleanup, maybe we can get more picked up that way by bags. So I'm willing to compromise trying to fall clean up and deal with the burning part of it and just pick up the leaves, since I'm the one who fought this operation.
Let's just drop the burn for now.
Mm-hmm. Drop the burn for now. Okay.
I think we can still look at different ways to encourage people to bag them and clean them up.
Well, we're hoping with the fall thing that we can encourage them to...
Yeah, and we discussed that at the meeting we had. I believe Mr. Miller has some information on some bags, and so if, J.C., if you'd share that with us, the cost, et cetera, then you can kind of tell us if you think they're worth trying to get some in.
They can be very short and sweet. The cheapest I've found is gonna be for about 20,000 without going out for a bid, it's just a budgetary quote. 20,000 of them's gonna be somewhere around $8,000. That's for the double paper bag ones like we used to have.
What's it, come down to each?
Forty-eight cents, somewhere in there.
How much?
About forty-eight cents, I think, is what I figured out.
Forty-eight cents a bag?
Yeah, I think that's where, I don't have the calculator here to actually figure it out, but... The other thing is, back when we did the grant on them back in 2004, 2005 for the 70,000 bags we used to have, there was some discussion with the council about if we wanted to be in composite, being competitive with businesses here in town on selling these bags. I don't know if it's still a concern or not, but...
Oh, I see.
It's a minor concern. Okay, any questions for Mr. Miller?
Do you think there's any hesitation on the citizen's part to have to drive to the fire stations if we were to have better locations for them to pick, you know, drop the leaves off?
We'll pick them up on the regular route.
I think we're offering the best service possible right now. We're taking them in almost any form that they're doing them in, I mean, besides the paper bags, if they actually have some, like a trash can out there that has some stuff in there, they've been dumping it that way also.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, we're trying to make it as convenient as possible for the residents.
Yeah, I don't think putting a dumpster out where they can't be washed wouldn't be good, because you're gonna end up with everything in the world.
I think Kevin and the guys out there at the fire station is, that's, and the mayor's idea, that has worked out really good. There, you know, it's manned 24/7, they keep an eye on stuff out there, it's worked out really well.
I know, I know they check it a lot, because I go there real frequently and they see me.
Anytime I can't get it fixed at the house, I clear it up there.
Sure.
Forty cents a bag, J.C.
And there's some shipping on there.
Yeah, oh, okay. And another nickel.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, J.C.? Thank you, J.C. I'll entertain a motion to drop this, or...
Motion, drop it.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion of that motion?
Do we want to go ahead and have J.C. order the bags in, or do we want to talk about that?
Make a motion.
Make them up.
I, well, we can discuss it, but I think that's probably, from the prices I've been told are here, that's probably double what you can get them at other places, isn't it? Or does anybody know?
I have no idea.
Oh, are they?
They're quite a bit higher.
That ain't real bad considering, if you could get, I mean, they'll deliver them to your door if you call the city and have them.
Why couldn't we do business with our local vendors here, buy them from them? We're gonna pay them.
Taxes, taxes, that sounds...
Are we...
The big problem you're running into is getting everybody using number one, number two is running out, so you can't get them at all.
I think that was some of the concerns we talked about.
You have one that says it's seasonal, I mean...
Yeah, that's all I need.
I know.
I would think that if you want to do the thing, you know, you want to maybe make it available as a convenience, but I don't think, then I think you'd want to pay or charge the same amount for the bags that local, the local vendors are charging, so you're not in competition.
True.
Or you may want to make it higher. As I understand, last time we actually delivered them, right, J.C.?
We want to get out of that business.
We want to get out of that business.
No, they can come get them.
So, you know...
I thought the idea was to make them available for free to the citizens, was that...
No, they never do that.
Well, I mean, that might be encouraging.
That's a law of mine.
Yeah, could be. I think there were a few given out originally.
Well, but the original bags came from a grant, these we would be buying ourselves now.
J.C., does that, is that, with a logo on it or no logo?
There's no logo.
Yeah, because we don't need, we don't need the logo.
No.
You can have City of Portland on there or something.
Right.
Not bad for them.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and move on to motion, and then if you want to make another one about the bags, well, I'll entertain that, okay? There's not any further discussion on the motion for dropping this vegetation burning allowance thing. I'll go ahead and call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We've dropped that. If there's a motion on the bags, I'll entertain it, but otherwise, if you want to think about it for...
I'll make a motion to purchase them.
I'll second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second to purchase the bags, and... Is there any further discussion of that motion?
Well, is this basically so we can have bags year-round and people can come and get them if they need them?
Very good. Okay. Will we have a place to store them? Where are we gonna charge for them? There's a lot of questions with this.
Well, we've got a new warehouse.
Yeah, I know. I want to fill it up with bags.
We got that covered.
All right. Very good. I have a motion on the floor, is any further discussion on purchasing the bags, to purchase the bags? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase of the bags, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's one no. Okay, we'll move on to new business, and for medical center, it looks like we're gonna have a relay-for-life team.
Right.
Are they here this evening? Yes, Ms. Feldner, would you like to come forward?
Well, actually, we had a relay-for-life team too, we tried to... So what we were wanting to do, and please apologize for the date, I emailed Courtney the wrong date, we were hoping for the 2nd of April, not the 1st. That's a Saturday, not a Friday, but we're wanting to do a 5K, and our hope is honestly just to start here at the Cover Bridge, go about the halfway, we're gonna do first the youth mile, and then the 5K, hopefully 8, 9 for those start times, and then we're just gonna start and stop there, so that means they're gonna run halfway and then come back, does that make sense? Might be a little congested, we realize that, we've seen those types of events, but that way we're not having to stop, do any roadblocks. It'll hopefully allow us, because we are limited volunteers, to have less volunteers that's why. So that is our plan officially. Do you guys have additional questions?
They're not being approved, are they?
No, see, I, we're not really, this is our first, I didn't know what we needed to do exactly, so I emailed Courtney and she said first bring this to you guys, so I didn't know what next that we needed to do, so it needs to be approved by...
It's all on the trail over there.
It's on the trail.
Oh, it's on the trail. Yeah, sorry, I didn't care.
Clay's the trail open?
What?
Clay says the trail is available.
Yeah, I did talk to Clay about it.
There you go. Very good.
It's great that you're doing that. It's nice to keep people off the streets if we can, so...
Great.
Maybe you can start and go both ways.
I move for approval.
I second.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a motion and a second to approve the request for relay-for-life 5K. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you. Item number eight is council concerns. At this time, if the council has any concerns or questions they'd like to ask, have a... Yes, Mr. West?
Yeah, real quick, two things. The packet this time, when I opened it up, it's like, I don't know, six, seven pages thick.
No, three, four.
I wonder if we should, I'd like to go back to consideration of electronic packets again, especially when they're this thin. Do I need to put that in the form of a motion? I will.
Discuss it.
Let's have some discussion on it.
Do another work session on it?
Okay.
I want to do it on a work session, it's fine.
Want to do a work session again?
Sure.
Sounds good.
Okay. The second part is, I don't know, we've got a couple races in the city council, I think in past years, the packet has been sent to the other candidates as well as the incumbents. I don't know if that's ever been pointed out, so I don't know if that's happening or not.
Really? I don't get it.
When I ran, I think I only got the agenda when I came up and got it.
I used to get it.
That's all, yeah.
I did.
Maybe because I knew Carol, I don't know, just, you know, I thought, make it available for them anyway.
For those running, yeah.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Pass that on to the clerk.
Oh, you just did.
She hurried. Yes, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, I have one from a Westminster student, the email that was sent on to me, would like to have on the last Saturday in February, a unity march, inviting the whole entire community between Westminster, William Woods, and the community, and they would like to use the route they use on their homecoming parade, which he said was from Churchill on 7th Street, Court, and South, and stop in the middle of the Brick District, and have the mayor say something about unity for that month, and the two college presidents and another person. Basically, they would only need officers, they said at the intersection, and they're gonna do it on that Saturday afternoon, so most downtown wouldn't be that busy, I guess, as far as traffic, because it'd be 1:00, something in that area. So I guess that I'm asking for them permission to do a unity march.
The last Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Will they need any police support?
Yeah, probably.
I would say probably one intersection, right through, even at 6 and Court, I guess.
Has this been discussed? Just coordinate that with the chief.
Who, what students?
Westminster Students Association.
Westminster, okay.
Has this been discussed with the chief at all?
No, but with the mayor and I, Mr. Johnson, we've been talking about it, and so I told him I would just ask the council tonight if they had a problem with it or not, so we know where we go from that one.
Well, the only problem I see is if the chief has to bring somebody in, he has to pay him overtime. You think you'd be able to spare one officer for 45 minutes?
I didn't...
I'm kidding.
Oh, I'm sure that, is Mr. Binkley still up there? I'm sure it's Westminster, it's off, it could probably be Churchill, or...
I didn't understand the route.
From Churchill up 7th, then just down to the middle of the Brick District.
It normally takes three officers for that, be safe. Usually, we can leapfrog from Westminster to Nichols, but we need somebody at Jefferson, because Jefferson and Nichols are usually two intersections, and then we have a lead car to make sure that they can move safely, so it takes a minimum of three.
Could they use Westminster security to help you out?
They don't have any authority on the street, I mean, they can.
I mean, we allow other organizations, you volunteers, right, to help with that?
In some instances, yes.
To some extent?
Mm-hmm. If they just want a lead car and want to block the intersections, I guess we can do For, for the marathons and runs, it's not such a big deal as it is when you've got vehicles moving through those intersections, but, yeah, we can do that.
Are they be all on foot?
Huh?
No vehicles, all walking.
They're all walking?
It's a walk, yeah.
It's a walk.
Okay, well, they can, yeah, walking, they can... Okay, well, they can, yeah, sort of walking, they can, they can stop just like the cars do, that's what the, that's what the marathons do.
I think they'll stay pretty close, pretty together, instead of stretching out for blocks and blocks, too.
Okay.
So could you explain it again? This is a community thing for all of the, all of us?
Anybody who wants to come and join in a unity march.
Okay, unity march, okay. Just together, okay.
Right. It's open to everybody in the town, and the two colleges, and they're sending out emails to the public schools for youth, too, who wants to join in.
Yeah, if they're just walking, they can do just like the, the marathons. We don't stop traffic for the marathons unless it's a timed thing, so, yeah, they can just adhere to the stop signs and the traffic.
Sure.
No problem. They don't, they don't really need an officer.
But when, depending on what they do, I'll get back with you when we get more into the, we know the format and all that and direction, but I'll give it to you, just even talk to them.
Can we bring this back to the next meeting for approval, because I don't think we can really take a motion on this tonight.
It, well... We kind of talked about that, if you bring it back to the next meeting, they have like no time to...
I understand that, but...
What is, you don't understand is just people walking down the street.
I know, I get the whole thing.
We should go, I'm going to go.
We're just not prepared for this, Steve.
What?
I mean, I think it's a good idea, but it's just like, there's lots of questions still.
What is your question? There's people walking down the street, holding hands, a unity march. You don't know what a unity march is? I don't know how to explain it more, it's like a...
It's like a care for each other in the community.
Care for each other, and they stop just down Seventh, and they stop on Court Street.
I get, I guess, I guess the point is, lack of planning shouldn't constitute us jumping through hoops to allow something, is where I'm at, because...
Oh, Mike, then go to the history.
Hang on a minute, we just had some ladies come ask about a 5K.
So don't even start.
They followed the normal process.
That's a tacky comment now.
Oh, is it, Steve?
Yeah, how you phrased it, it was.
No. The normal process is somebody sends it, we get it on the agenda, we talk about it. It's gone through Clay, or the chief, or whoever, that, for what we need, so we can work out the logistics before we get to the meeting.
Do as, do as you please, Mike, you know. Are they walking down the street? Yes. Are the streets blocked off? The chief just told you they can walk, like, even in the marathons, and they just stop at the crosswalk.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, it's just I don't think we followed our process here.
To me, it shows unity within the city. That's going to be firefighters, it can be me, it could be, it can be city council, it can be whoever. If you care about each other and care about your city, that's basically what they're asking, is to show that, just to show the world.
I don't think that's Mike's point.
It's not my point.
It isn't, I know, I know, I know.
I think your point duly noted, I'm going to smoothly let this go, but next time, let's try.
Let's get a point that has a little...
Yeah, exactly.
Don't get too picky now, because there's a lot of groups come here, ain't had time to... I make the motion that we accept the Westminster College Students Association Unity March.
I'll second.
Okay.
Did we already have a motion on the floor?
We did, yes.
Yeah, I'd already said the motion, but it don't matter, it's fine.
I think we have to handle the first motion first. Would you repeat that, please, Madam Speaker?
Mr. Cantle made a motion to go ahead and accept this proposition at this time, but in the future, all entities should go through the process appropriately.
Okay.
Was there a second on that?
No.
I'll second that.
Yeah, for, I don't know, for discussion, I would like to have the people that are organizing it get with the chief, and just make sure that we know what's going on.
I'll do that for you.
So that everybody's on the same page.
Okay, very good. As a point of clarification, Steve, is the Human Rights Commission endorsing this?
Carmen said she didn't have a problem with it, and they're going to march in at the one, so they will.
Human rights is basically being part of the sponsor of this thing. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can you let us know, like, what time?
Yeah.
For me?
I want to know.
I would have Laura senior email us.
All right, great. Please.
Very good. All those in, call for the question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. We'll have a march. Okay, we'll now move on to...
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, before we move on, could I get an update on the bridge that, that got torn up down here at the college? I think we've got that back open now, is that right?
The one on Vine Street?
Nichols Bridge.
Millwall Street, River Road Bridge?
Talking about the, uh, the street bridge up there, yeah, the wooden bridge up there that the car went over. The railing is now fixed, and it's open, as of, should have been Monday afternoon, so...
It's been closed for quite a while.
Yeah, it's been closed for quite a while. We were working with the insurance company to fund those repairs. It's, it's repaired to a better condition than existed before. It should be a little safer, it's not perfect, so it's a wooden structure, but you'll definitely notice the difference between one side versus the other side, so it was reinforced as best we could, while also getting the funds from the insurance company to pay for it all, so...
When did this occur, and what happened? I'm not aware of this incident.
Yeah, the, um, the date, the date that the car went over the bridge...
Yeah.
Shoot, chief, do you remember what the date was? It's been probably, you know, late December, early January.
Really?
Six weeks ago.
This is the second time that's happened in the thirty years I've lived in Fulton. Somebody's gone over that bridge, so we've made it worse, it's not going to happen again.
No, I'm not going to say that the car cannot get over that bridge.
It needs to be that way, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think in a perfect world, I would agree with you, to make that happen, we're talking quite a few dollars, just considering the type of structure that exists there, it's a, you know, it's an old wooden bridge, I think it has an eight-ton limit, you know, eventually that bridge is going to have, potentially be replaced down the road, and at that point, you know, I think that we might be getting closer to that perfect world.
Yeah, sounds like that. I hate time to put that on the list. Pardon me? I don't remember it being replaced, I do remember somebody else going over that once, though.
You are right. It's someone about ten years ago. Has it been a very short time?
I think it's actually maybe a little bit longer than that.
It was, too.
And...
Time flies, Mr. Moore.
You'll definitely, Mike, if you go up there and take a look at it, it's, it's improved from what it was, but no, it is not ideal.
All right, thank you, I'll take a look. Appreciate that.
Thanks for bringing that up. Are there any other council concerns we need to hear? If not, we'll move on to ordinances. We have bill number fourteen forty-five for first read. It's a ordinance that rezones the properties that we had a hearing on earlier in the week, in the evening. Bill number fourteen forty-five. Councilman Shiloh, would you please present that?
Bill number fourteen forty-five, an ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning ordinance certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri, known as two oh eight Northeast Eighth Street, two, two oh eight northeast Eighth Street, and eight thirteen North Blood Street, establish an effective date. I move it's going on fourteen forty-five, then go down with my team.
Second. Very good. I have a motion and a second to...
Advance it to...
Advance bill fourteen forty-five, is there any discussion?
We're going to read it next time.
Next time.
He wants to read it next.
Thank you for your help.
Wow, sorry.
That's all, I mean, you got a lot of...
Is there any further discussion of the, of the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to, and the gentleman's not here anymore, but I think when, when all rallies was approved, it may have only been one council member that's present tonight, maybe, maybe Mr. Mayor was also here, but I don't think most of us were here when that occurred.
Oh, when he was talking.
I just wanted to clarify that. I know I wasn't here.
Okay, very good. If there's not any further comment, I'll call for a question. All those in favor of advancing bill number fourteen forty-five, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Under appointments, I would like to reappoint, or have you approve a reappointment of Rodney Laddie to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd also, yeah, like for you to approve the appointment of Sarah McDaniel, or her designate, to the Parks and Rec Committee as, as a non-voting member. Still moved? Very good, thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Under announcements, Tuesday, the sixteenth, I believe it is, at eight o'clock in the morning, Walker Wright from Retail Coach will be meeting with us at the Callaway Electric. You are invited. If, he will be here for the next three days, the next two days, Tuesday through Thursday, and would like for you, as Bill's email indicated earlier, and we've heard from Mike and Mrs. Clu, that you'd like to meet with him, and, but any of the rest of the council, if you'd like to meet with him, please let us know, and we will make sure that happens.
You said that was the sixteenth at eight?
Sixteenth at eight o'clock in the morning, yes, at the Callaway Electric. Okay. That would, so we're trying to give you some various times, the next day, I think he's meeting here at City Hall about one o'clock. Okay. And then he, he will, like I say, be available the next two days.
Yeah, if that time doesn't work for you, let us know, we'll try to work something out.
Is there any other announcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
I think so.[1787.82]